Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the October 9, 2024 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Valerie, would you please do a roll call? Here.
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 Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have student matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the October 9, 2024 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Valerie, would you please do a roll call? Here.
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 We have one set of...
I'll let you phone it.
What? Oh, thank you. Great job. It's normally Kelly that corrects me. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thanks, Ben. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have one set of minutes to approve. Wait, hold on. Where are my minutes? Yeah, from the September 18, 2024 business meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the Board of Education, you may do so by approaching the podium, and if so, please state your first and last name. But it does not appear that we have any public participation. Okay. Oopsies. Okay. Jumping into some exciting news happening within the district. Tomorrow evening, we have, for those that are not familiar, the Harrison Educational Foundation is actually celebrating 30 years of support for Harrison schools and will hold its annual celebration fundraiser tomorrow evening, October 10, at Harrison Meadows at 6:30 PM. And if anyone is interested for more information about the foundation and various grants that they've provided and the ongoing support, you can visit the Hef website at harrisoned.org. And a bunch of us will be in attendance because it's always a wonderful evening. The Fine and Performing Arts, we had Mary Grace Crozier has been accepted as a member of NISMIA, of the All-State Treble Chorus, including soprano two, Elizamick, soprano two, and Rena Iwaski. And the bass clarinet have been named as alternate. So congratulations to all of Raffine and Performing Arts for their All-State recognitions. We also, a big congratulations to the wonderful Dr. Tanaka, Dr. Coco Tanaka-Suan, who she teaches at the Preston and Purchase Elementary Schools. She has been named one of the 25 semifinalists for the Grammy 2025 Music Educator Award. Dr. Tanaka-Suan was selected out of 2,400 initial nominations from 49 states, and we will find out the 10 finalists in early December. So best of luck to her. She is incredibly talented, and for those students that are interested in strings, she just gets them engaged and thoroughly involved and passionate about their craft. So best of luck to Dr. Tanaka-Suan. The debate, the debate team is always on our update. Congratulations to our high school debate team, member Atarv Gandhi, on winning the NYCFL football tournament this past weekend, and Flynn Williams on placing fourth. This is the team's third tournament win this season. We also had a member Reese Potash on placing third at Valley High School's National Championship in Iowa last weekend, and Brooks Giano on being the top speaker and placing ninth, and Jack Nester and Flynn Williams on making the top 15. So all four earned qualifying bids to the tournament champions. Also, for debate news, once again, Reese Potash was a top speaker at Green Hills National Championship in Texas this past weekend, or that was like two weeks ago, and Jack Borman on qualifying for the Tournament of Champions, and Jack Gesner on placing in the top 20. And congratulations to Andrew Gaffron, Adina Naim, and Atarv Gandhi on winning awards at Yale's National Championship over the weekend. I mean, these students that are part of debate, literally, first of all, they travel nonstop. They are working around the clock. It is so impressive, and the accolades are just never-ending. Moving on to athletics, the Huskies have won, I believe it's their last three games in a row. We defeated Eastchester 24-0, Clarkstown North 7-0, and they defeated Nyack 21-6. Yeah, they've won three straight games, and they've only given up 20 points in that span. So super impressive. They're on a great winning streak. Our Huskies soccer team defeated Eastchester 4-0 with goals from Acacello, Ulsi, Stylo, and Yates, and they also beat Pelham 3-2. And the Huskies defeated Byram Hills 3-0, as well as defeating Pelham 3-0 in the league opener. Ingrid Murphy had a hat-trick, and Kara Acacello had two assists, Kaya Ito had 11 saves. So congrats, guys.
Some of them are in the house.
Yeah, of course. Our boys soccer team defeated Eastchester 1-0. Zachary Foster scored with an assist from Otaro Tanaka. Harrison 2 v. John J. Cross River, zip. Matthew Gardner and Gavin Enson each had a goal. Harrison also defeated Eastchester 3-0, as well as Pelham 3-0 in the big league matchup. So the Huskies in the boys soccer are currently 6-2 and 2 on the season. Moving on to the swim team. Harrison has been on a five-meter winning streak, defeating the teams from Poughkeepsie, Portchester, Yorktown Somers, Austining, and Lakeland. Against Yorktown Somers, Angelina Legiza continued her sectional run by qualifying for the 50 freestyle, and Sophia Bondikov added the 100 butterfly to her list of sectional qualifications. Huskies defeat Poughkeepsie 52-41, Portchester 48-39, and Yorktown 50-44. The field hockey team, they defeated Rynek 1-0 on a buzzer beater by Chelsea Porto, and the Huskies defeated Byram Hills 1-0 thanks to a goal scored by Lila Berkery. And the team continues, actually, to hold their first-place spot, which is super exciting. They defeated Pelham 3-0. Pelham is a really solid team. The goals were scored by Chelsea Porto. She had two goals, assisted by Emma Mizella and Juliana Waisberg, and a third goal scored by Harper Canal, unassisted. The Huskies won another league game, defeating Panis 4-0, and Emma Mizella scored twice there as well, and was assisted by Lila Berkery and Adriana Briotta. Anna Youngstrom and Harper Canal scored as well and were assisted by Chelsea Porto. So great job, girls. The girls volleyball team, they earned their first place at the Pelham Tournament, and the volleyball team beat Eastchester 3-0. They also won 3-1 over Ursulon and defeated Valhalla 3-2. And the boys cross-country team won its first seasonal, season invitational with three athletes in the top 10. The freshman boys cross-country team placed at the Bear Mountain Meet, and Joey Porticaro earned his first medal by placing in the top 20. Both the boys and girls cross-country teams walk away with the wins at the Rockwood Hall Quad Meet. These kids are like pretty solid across the board in every sport on various courts and fields. So congratulations to all. Just a reminder that on Monday is Columbus Day, schools will be closed, and that week following, we have a bunch of PTA meetings. I think each school may have a PTA meeting that week, maybe not Preston. So keep your eye on the district calendar. There's so much happening, and I really encourage parents to continue to be involved, and there's wonderful things to celebrate happening within all of our school buildings. And Dr. Wool, that concludes my update.
We could have done that all night.
Yeah.
I'm sure you all forgot schools close Monday, right? You needed that reminder, probably not. So I'm very excited. Before we jump into our presentation, a couple of things. I want to recognize our middle school, Lewis M. Klein Middle School, and Harrison High School, were selected by the State of New York as mentor schools. That means we're so good, we're going to help other high schools and middle schools across the state of New York figure out how to be more effective at teaching and learning because we should. We do a really good job, and we want to share it. I want to recognize, did any of you go to the carnival? No. There, there you go. John Eric did. You probably did at some point in your life. Mrs. Briotta has volunteered for so many years to do the Elementary Enrichment Carnival. Those of you who don't know why we do the carnival, it's to raise money to support all four elementary schools in the Fine and Performing Arts, Mrs. Loacher. So we are fully committed to the arts. But I just want to thank those parents who volunteer all that time and take all that money and funnel it to all four of our elementary schools. It's one of the things that makes me most proud, that our parents come together and support our entire community. It's just remarkable. We also, since our last board meeting, we had a memorial for Mark Anthony Giordano up at the high school, where we invited the current ninth grade and some former members of his team. I thought the speakers were incredibly thoughtful and empowering, and it really was a celebration of the things that he gave to that class and that they gave to him. So just a beautiful event, and I want to thank his sister. I thought her uplifting comments were just incredible. And while we're talking about incredible, we recognized many people in our district this past month for tenure. We are a district that takes time to celebrate teachers with their families and friends, and we recognize many, include our own Dr. Lisa Mulho, who got tenure that night, and we all love her to death. And a couple of other things coming up. We are doing some research because the superintendent does not support the idea of banning cellphones. He supports the idea of teaching students how to use cellphones appropriately. And so we're going to work as hard as we can to try to help understand, people understand why we think that position is important, but we're also going to be putting together some trainings for elementary, middle, and high school parents to help them do better at understanding and help their kids navigate all kinds of technology, not just cellphones. But the reason I'm so pumped tonight is I've been looking forward to this presentation for a very long time. I'm not talking to anybody. Who's going to stand at the podium first? Oh, Ms. Bukema is coming up, our high school principal. Just so I don't feel like I'm talking to an empty space. Okay. Hi, Kim. Good evening.
Hi there.
So I want to talk to you a little bit about what this presentation is really about. The title doesn't do it full justice. So we believe in our district in building the capacity of everyone. And I was having my opening year conference with Ms. Bukema, talking about, actually it was last year, it was our mid-year conference, talking about how we can do more to take talented, empathetic students like you and get you involved in helping us make our high school culture more inviting. And we were brainstorming, and we thought, we have all these club advisors who are terrific teachers. We have all these coaches who are extraordinary coaches, but is there a way to unify the approach that they use to invite people in to participate? And we love that idea. And one of the other things that we do is we invite our most talented teachers, if they're willing, to become leaders, formal leaders in the organization. And this year, I have three extraordinary people doing that work, Mrs. Riley, Ms. Moore, and Andrew Del Rosso, who's sitting in the back there. Hello, Andrew. I didn't get to say hello to you. And they've been with the program, the Future School Leaders Academy at Bank Street College for almost two years now. And they are learning at the building level, but they get unfortunately to spend two to three hours a month with me. And they asked me what kind of a project they could undertake that would make a difference. And my challenge to them was to think about, how can we take all these talented coaches and club advisors and create a way that they could further activate the power of our students to make our culture a more welcoming, inclusive environment? It's a short way of saying, we count on kids to make a difference, and it's our job as educators to give them the platform to do it. So that's what I think the presentation is really about tonight, and I'm really looking forward to hearing it. But for now, I'm going to turn it over to our very capable principal, Ms. Bukema, who told me today, or yesterday, this is the start of her ninth year.
It is.
It's hard to believe.
Because I look so young, correct?
Always, eternally young.
I just had to seek that out, right? And Dr. Wool has already introduced a couple of our presenters tonight, Leah Moore, Lindsay Riley, and Andrew Del Rosso, who, yes, are involved in our FSLA program, and they wear many hats at Harrison High School. They not only work across our English department. Andrew also is an ENL teacher who works, also doing journalism with the Husky Herald at the high school. So you see them across our extracurriculars, whether it's clubs, athletics, many different ways. And then, John Eric, next on the list, there is listed as Varsity Girls Soccer. He's also one of our physical education teachers at the high school and touches students' lives in many different capacities in both of those roles. And then we have students who are involved in our presentation this evening, Parker Yates, Kaya Ito, Christina Zumbo, Ingrid Murphy, and Kara Acacella. And then, in our music department, Deanna Loicher. Deanna is our band director, and you can always see her out at the football games with her band students and marching band, but also enjoy her concerts throughout a course of a year. And she plays a huge role in raising our student leaders for their performances and leading other students in performances. And then Henri Hasse and Jack Borman. And by the way, a lot of these names you've already heard tonight because they were in all of the accolades. Jack, I think, got named over and over and over again for debate, as well as our soccer players this evening. So you've already kind of pre-introduced them for me. Well, I think we're all familiar with the IB mission statement, but really, what truly brings the mission statement to life are the opportunities our students have through our extracurricular activities here at Harrison High School. These activities allow our students to actively develop the skills and attributes aligned with the IB philosophy. The students presenting this evening know the question I often ask them. What are you doing each and every day to make Harrison High School the kind of school that you want to attend? That we share the responsibility of making our school a place where every student feels seen, feels heard, and feels valued. This is the work that gets to happen through our extracurriculars. Student agency thrives in these spaces through the choice, voice, and ownership students have over their learning. Whether pursuing a passion or exploring new interests, our students build leadership and a deeper connection to our school community. And what you can see represented up there, I think you all have copies of the presentation so you don't have to strain your neck, but we have 47 distinct and different sports teams and 38 distinct clubs, not to mention a number of student groups which are not represented up there. And they are all completely student-led, whether we have students who are serving in leadership capacities in our club or leadership capacities through all of our sports teams. In total, we have close to over 900 students who participate in our clubs through our registration process, as well as about equal to that number in terms of filling athletic spots throughout the course of the season. And we're able to track all of that through our family ID systems. Our team of presenters this evening are going to make visible the intentionality of what is happening behind the scenes to contribute to the remarkable things our students get to do through these many opportunities. So I'm going to turn it over now to the first of our presenters, Andrew Del Rosso.
Hi, everybody. I'm Andrew Del Rosso. I'm an ENL teacher at Harrison High School, and I'm also the advisor for the Journalism Club. Since last September, Leah Moore, Lindsay Riley, and I have been participating in the FSLA program. This program has given us opportunities to have hands-on leadership experience in our building, mentorships with administrators all across the district, as well as practical training as teacher leaders. We're very grateful for this opportunity, and as Dr. Wool alluded to, we were ready to give back. This led us to beginning an ongoing conversation with Dr. Wool about the nature of extracurriculars in our district. We felt strongly that these, we felt strongly about the merit of our teams and clubs and the positive effect that they had in our children in the building. But we were wondering questions such as, how are the extracurriculars developing community all across the entire building? And how are we powering all students to be those leaders? Questions such as these prompted us to look at the data, observe the clubs and sports, and also to reflect upon our experience as teachers and experience of other teachers and students. As we continued consulting with Dr. Wool, we began to see the cyclical nature of clubs in our buildings. Every year started, clubs began, cultures were fostered, and then teams and clubs had celebrations, events, and alongside with competitions, right? But we recognize, while the purpose of each extracurricular was important, it was the disposition of the students and the clubs that was really making the difference at Harrison High School. We saw this work unfold with many skilled advisors and teachers, and you'll see some of them in this presentation today. But we wondered, how did this happen, right? Where did these teachers gain these skills and experience? So we recognized that this kind of work needed a place to grow. As interns, we felt bringing teachers together and facilitating ongoing professional development was going to be the best path to maximizing the impact of extracurricular coaches and advisors and the effect that they would have in our students. So it was the missing component to the cycle, working with our teachers. And with the support of Dr. Wool, Dr. Mulho, Kim Bukema, Larry Mastroda, and Maria Pace, the work had begun. So now I'm going to have Leah and Lindsay Riley, they're going to come up, and they're going to take us through the planning and implementing of the course that achieved these goals.
Thank you, Andrew. And you're being modest. One of the people we were studying was Andrew because when he took over the Husky Herald, he really revitalized the whole component and the culture of that extracurricular, and we've seen it in things like writers among us, just the energy that kids bring into the room. So you were one of the reasons that we were thinking about this.
And one of the deliberate steps we took, Leah and Lindsay, they taught the course, but I worked as a participant in the course because I recognized that although we've made a lot of progress with the club, there was still more work to be done. And it has really invigorated me as I've approached the club this year, and I think we see it with our student leaders. We're kind of in that phase where we're still making that progress on it, but I'm excited about the work that's coming. So thank you so much.
And the four of us would admit Andrew takes the best notes, right?
Hello, everyone. I'm Leah Moore, and I'm going to get us started to talk about the summer course that Lindsay and I had the pleasure to teach. So we took some very competitive people, and we put them in a room together. We had Dr. Mulho, and we had the Ms. Bukema, and Ms. Pace, our AP and principal of the high school. We had the director of fine arts, Matt Royal, the athletic director, Chris Galano, the assistant AD, Danny Gonzalez, and then we added 21 coaches, advisors, and put them all together for two days to see what would happen. And it was very competitive. So what we first noticed was what is happening in our spaces that create this welcoming and affirming space for students to be? And what was happening that made them select that space in the first place? Was it the skill that brought them there? Was it the rituals that happened there? Was it a friend that brought them along? And we started to identify the patterns we had noticed in these welcoming and affirming spaces. Then we looked around the room at these very accomplished leaders and said, how can we turnkey what the advisors and the coaches are already doing to be such strong leaders and cultivate that in the students themselves? So we looked at, what is it that inspired us to go into these spaces? What did we learn from to help us want to recreate this? Some people had really positive experiences. I had a coach that brought me here. Other people had really negative experiences, and I don't want to recreate that, so I'm changing the space for my students and my athletes. And then we asked them to take some whimsical activities, like building straw towers and recreating Lego features, and we saw how fast everyone could run, and ultimately realized, what does it take to build a team? What do we need to do to take all these people to work together with so many different dispositions to have this end goal? So because of all this work we did, we were able to articulate what the philosophies that each space had. We called them individual communities so that leadership was happening. What does it look like in individual spaces? And then we started to brainstorm what the collective experience could be because it was happening and is happening, which Lindsay will speak about, so beautifully. But how can we make it, as Dr. Wool said, something that is true regardless of where you are in the building? And we ultimately looked at, how could the advisors activate the kids to become agents of change? And that way, we have longevity, we have a shared mission and vision, and then we can move forward. So we're going to talk to you a little bit about how we did that in more detail and then tell you our next steps. So I'm going to invite Lindsay up to tell you about the mini-clinics we zoomed in on and why we chose these.
So as Leah mentioned, a key component in the development of this summer course was acknowledging the fact that we know there's incredible work happening in our building that's empowering students, and there's a lot of community building. It's happening every day all around us, and we needed to highlight that, right? So that's where we created these four mini-clinics. Truth be told, there are a plethora of coaches and advisors that we could have partnered with. We narrowed it down to just four. Two coaches and two advisors. So from Deb Totata's mini-clinic, we learned how she celebrates all identities, creating the inclusive and affirming environment for her dance connections and footlight players. We heard from Marco DiRocco's baseball players, whose citizenship is on display well beyond the baseball diamond. Derek Fish shared how he is fostering a community in the fit pack that welcomes all ages and all abilities, underscoring the notion that the promotion of health and fitness is something for all. And we heard about the student-led writing center, truly run by the students, for other students, where they feel empowered and safe to take social risks, to take academic risks, and in the process, become more autonomous learners. And the inclusion of these mini-clinics was twofold. Yes, of course, we wanted to celebrate the amazing work that we see happening in those spaces where students are becoming agents of change, but also, we wanted to tease out the specific strategies these coaches and advisors use to build that community and to foster the student leadership skills. Our goal with this analysis is to make explicit for all advisors and all coaches how to approach building a culture of belonging in a systematic way in their specific communities. And then from there, our goal is to make this systemic. In other words, whether students are in chem club or at the Husky Herald or on the tennis courts, they're not only working on the skills of that particular space, but they're also honing the ability to build community, as well as practicing the dispositions and the skills it takes to do that in all the spaces they inhabit. So I'm going to invite Leah Moore to come back up, and she's going to share a little bit of the reflections, some of our takeaways that we have after we've reflected on the course, as they pertain to our district's mission and vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
So because we had so many different spaces and communities, we thought the best way to ground this work was back in the mission and vision of Harrison, which is so clear for us as a pathway. So if you follow around the circle with us, these are some of the patterns that we've noticed and also invite some of the next steps that we are seeing. So number one is the equity piece of what voices are included. It was one of the questions Andrew said we had at the beginning. And we want to make sure that the students understand one another and support one another authentically, that they are celebrating all the different identity markers that they have. And... identity markers that they have, and that the students themselves are recruiting new members for the organization and the community that they're a part of. So if you're not that great at soccer, but you want to come and see what it's like at the end, when we all get to celebrate, come on along. And we are going to move towards it's less about the adults doing that recruitment, and more about the students doing it for one another. We also noticed that there are incredible celebration of rituals that happen in all of these spaces. And that itself can be an entire presentation, what each community does to create their own space. And we don't have to have the same ritual, but the fact is each of these clubs and sports have a ritual, and that is very unifying. The next piece we looked at was the adaptability. So it's really important that we create a network. As Lindsay said, we're looking towards what a system could be that's still our authentic mission and vision. So creating this network across the different coaches, across the advisors, that align the framework that we're working on is really important, because each person has to be adaptable, regardless of what skill they're working on. To move towards access, we need a continuity of routines. We will talk a little bit later about the concept of vertical pileup as one of our finale pieces for you. And what we've noticed is that students can move through their day with different routines, and regardless if they are moving from, from one club to another sport, if there's similar patterns there, it helps with their regulation. It helps them maintain their day. We also noticed that we do need to increase opportunities, and specifically focusing on ninth graders who are new to the building, and students who are new to the district. We want to make sure that they are as informed about what's going on. And finally, the rigor, that we need to continue to cultivate the dispositions in the students so that they can become agents of change. And in just a moment, you're going to hear how we are very successfully already doing that, and can continue to turnkey this into all of our spaces. And ultimately, as mentioned before, this leadership will transfer to the students, that we have spaces where the students are leading the students, and the teacher, and the advisor, and the coach is almost invisible. But to be that invisible, you had to do a lot of work to be able to go away. So what that looks like, and how we can teach more people to do so. So that is a great transition for two people who have accomplished that beautifully, and that is our girls varsity soccer team and the marching band. So I am proud to first enter, introduce John Eric Sapala, who is the head coach of the varsity girls soccer team. He has been at Harrison for 20 years, and he has been working on this inclusivity the entire time, and we're just very excited now that we can partner with him and learn from him to do it more. So come on in.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Wool, Dr. Mulhall, and the Board of Ed, Kim Bukama, I see Maria Pace here, Christopher Galano. Basically, even if you didn't know it, you have approved many of the trips that we've gone on that are for team bonding, and that's a crucial part of our team and the community that we have been cultivating. So you actually have been cultivating it behind the scenes, whether you know it or not. So with that being said, on these trips, we're fostering cooperation, communication, respect, responsibility. And I'll talk about resilience in a little bit. But with that, everything from whitewater rafting and hiking, to doing food banks and cancer awareness walks, everything in between, we're trying to cultivate and nurture an environment where all those traits are fostered. Can anyone tell me what this is?
A compass?
A compass, yes. All right. Little feeble piece of plastic, but let alone one of the most miraculous inventions we have. This device, looking at it, you might think it's broken. You might figure, be like, how am I going to navigate with this? But once you have this instrument, and you're able to figure out how to use it, it's a tool to bring you wherever you want to go. On, on that journey, and leaving home, you might feel vulnerable, which a lot of people in high school do. And we're cultivating that community where you feel welcomed. And the five individuals behind me have done that immaculately. But the bearings on this, if you don't know how to use them, those are the tools, just like the character traits. And the thing about it is, once you get it, you can navigate anywhere, and this will bring you home. And that's basically what athletics are to me and the soccer team, is it's a second home. And those are what a lot of the clubs and the athletic programs are to many individuals at Harrison High School. So that was my little metaphor with the, with the compass, because I take you guys hiking all the time, and you trust me to lead you, so good thing I know how to use it. But with that being said, these individuals behind me are absolutely amazing. Talk about resilient. The other day, they were in a soccer game against Pelham, and we talked about positive mindset. We were down 2-0 at halftime, and they ended up coming back within 30 minutes, getting three goals to two, winning the game. And with that positive mindset, with that openness, with that leadership, those are the character traits that we've instilled. So we have Christina Zumbo, Cara Acisella, Ingrid Murphy, Parker Yates, Kaya Ito, and they're going to say a little bit about their endeavors in soccer, sports, and athletics.
Hi, my name is Christina. One of the crucial things that allows our team to be so close, safe, and enjoyable is the fact that we spend so much time together, whether on or off the field. Just this year, we have participated in many team bonding activities, such as a ropes course, laser tag, and team dinners at players' houses, and brunches at the diner after early practices. In past years, we have taken overnight trips to Lake George, and have done yoga and mindful meditations as a team. All of these activities encourage teamwork and community, which can be clearly seen in our friendships off the field, and our connections on the field. This year especially, we have gotten closer with the boys varsity soccer team, watching their games, and hanging out with them, unifying the Harrison soccer family as a whole.
Hi. Hi, I am Cara Acisella. Just as important as team bonding, we try to create a fun and positive environment to get everyone enthusiastic about game days. Through incorporating outfit themes, jerseys, or game day vlog, we hype ourselves up and advertise to the rest of our school to come support us at our game later that day. In addition to wearing our jerseys on game days, we have also done outfit themes this year consisting of dressing as twins and wearing PJs. Another activity we do during game day is a modified version of tag, where if you get caught, you have to lie on the ground in the hallways. This may seem embarrassing to some, but for us, it's a unifying game that creates a competitive atmosphere, which helps us mentally prepare as we head into our games.
Hi, I'm Ingrid. One of the things I've always loved about soccer is the fact that it's an escape from reality and a safe space for me. It allows me to forget about my worries, my problems, and anything else that's bothering me. For 90 minutes at practice, or 90 minutes at a game, the only thing I'm focused on is being the best player I can be. This team has always curated an environment that allows me to improve myself every time I step on the field as a player and as a person. Throughout, throughout wins and losses, this team has always stuck together, showing resilience and strengthening everyone, every game. Since being on the team freshman year, the captains have always preserved this environment, and have pushed everyone to be their true selves. I vividly remember the game, the last games of my past two seasons on the team. Everyone was upset, many of us crying, because we would no longer have the safe space available to be with teammates we now call friends. Each year I've been on the team, I've seen friendships grow throughout the season, and continue out of soccer. Soccer has allowed not only me, but many of my teammates to feel comfortable and create everlasting friendships.
Hi, I'm Parker. Our team community has not been built this single season. It is a culmination of the culture that we've been fostering for years. This year, our goal has been to maintain the legacy of those who came before us, many of them being role models, and create an even more supportive and inclusive environment. For me, I joined the team my freshman year, and was immediately welcomed in by the upperclassmen. I admired the captains especially, who quickly got to know me and set a positive example. As captains this year, we have hoped to be role models through our work ethic, attitude, and sportsmanship, hoping to create a collective environment that trickles down through JV and modified as well.
Hi, I'm Kaya. I'm excited to stand here today as a captain, captain. I want to especially thank to Parker, Cara, Ingrid, and Christina. I struggled a lot when I first joined the varsity team in 10th grade, but you, like, those girls and other teammates always offered me a help, and were there for me when I needed. I am more quieter side of the field, but on the field, I'm always vocal, because I believe that communication is what brings a team together and help us over, overcome challenges. I would be, I wouldn't be standing here as a senior with all of you, and the coaches and captains who came before us, who led the way. The reason I want to be a captain was simple. I would, I wanted to give back to everyone. It has been my goal this season to foster clear communication, inspire every teammate, and work tirelessly to unlock our collective potential. When we come together as one, there's nothing we can't achieve. We are making the most of this moment, and we are working to seize this opportunity together. Thank you. And go Huskies, beat Ry.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I have a question. John Eric, come on back. But first of all, here's a survey question. How many participated in Husky Day? In fifth grade, Husky Day, you remember? Oh, guess who had a big part in creating Husky Day? The guy coming up here. Stand, I have a question for you. How you select your captains? So it, it varies. So, you know, we have Lindsay Riley and I are at the helm of the ship, and we've always focused on having a small number of captains. This year, we have three senior captains and two junior captains. Raise your hands, so we can see. Three seniors, raise your hands, Parker, Kaya, and Christina. And we have two junior captains. That's a lot of captains. Ingrid, and Cara. And people might say, hey, that's a little jumbled. How do you get things accomplished, and there are too many cooks in the kitchen? But actually, they unite as one, and they all bring their own personal character trait to the table. And the team actually decided on them to be the captains, and instead of taking that away from the team, we agreed to that, and they've done a phenomenal job working together. I just wanted to point out that you have five caps, and they all lead collectively. It's a very powerful statement about the culture you have built. John Eric is one of my proudest hires. I actually hired him. He has the most unusual background. So typically, physical educators come with expertise in physical education. He has a lot of expertise in community building around, particularly around recreation. One of the first things I asked him to do was take a bunch of kids in the woods and get lost, hence the compass reference. But thank you, this was really helpful. Well, I'm happy I didn't get lost, and I'm happy to be here, so thank you. I'm happy you're here. Okay.
So next, we would like to invite up Ms. Deanna Locher, who is our poised and fearless marching band director. And we are very proud of the marching band, not only for their collaboration with the football team during home games, their community connection in local parades, but they recently performed at UPenn, UConn, and Washington DC in the Memorial Day Parade. So I'd like to invite her up to talk about how leadership is cultivated in this very impressive program.
I just wonder how she persists without any sleep at all.
Hello. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. Also, a very sincere thank you for your fabulous support of the band program, and particularly our marching band. I'm here today to speak about student leadership and community development within this ensemble. So I'll start by sharing that marching band is so much hard work. Our entire team is on the field the entire time. 100% of our performers are on stage 100% of the time. And the learning and growth process is a very public one. Additionally, regardless of experience, every single individual's performance impacts everyone else's performance. And this learning includes performing from memory, while moving, while having trust in the people around you that they're not going to bump into you, in front of your peers, while sometimes wearing funny hats. The key critical role in this are our marching band student leaders, who perform tangible, impactful roles, and contribute greatly to the success of the season. To serve as leaders, our students demonstrate a high level of musical skills through the performance of an Isma-aligned solo, and they share their interest in, in their desire to serve through an application process. And through this process, the roles and responsibilities are defined and assigned. Our student leaders are then also required to participate in a leadership training, and it's in, within those two days prior to band camp, that we develop our team together. It's here that we annually start the process of regrowing the culture and the skills to serve. These skills include rehearsal skills, team-building skills, and the skills of collaboration, where they learn to collaborate not only with each other, but also the marching band teachers. Our goal ultimately together each year is to create the conditions in which all students in the, in the ensemble can find success and grow. Our concept behind student leadership is that at, as leaders, students are choosing to actively engage in the work to cultivate an ensemble culture in which all students can thrive. Reflecting, adapting, and working together to elevate the experience for all is really, really hard work. Sometimes it's endless and thankless. And for this reason, too, we make a lot of effort to make space to acknowledge the many contributions, accomplishments, and triumphs. We see that, we see that form along the way. It's such a joy every year to watch our student leaders commit to these challenges of elevating not only what is seen and heard, but really also what our community feels. We have fabulous band students, and really, really, really wonderful student leaders. I'm so proud to introduce two of our, this year's drum majors today, Henri Hase and Jack Borman, who have worked so hard to contribute beautifully, and so impactfully to our marching band team. They'll be sharing their thoughts, and those two of drum major Oliver Shank, who is not able to be here tonight, about their experiences in leadership and community building. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deanna.
Hello, my name is Jack Borman. I want to start by saying that great leadership is the backbone of our ensemble. It fosters unity, dedication, and a true shared passion for music that makes us so good at those football games. I want to share a specific memory of when I was a freshman, brand new to band. We had come off of a hybrid school year, so I wasn't really well versed in the culture of it. I walked into the room unaware, nervous. I didn't know anybody. I'm specifically a saxophone player. In that year, we didn't have too many sections, and people playing saxophone. But it was my drum major Jorge, who switched instruments from flute to saxophone to teach me not just music, but about the culture of marching band. And I learned the songs, what it means to be a marching band student, and so much other monumental things that I still carry to this day. I think the best thing specifically about marching band leadership is that it fosters a community of other leaders. So what I have learned from leaders as a freshman, I use as myself and my own career as a leader, and so do so many people in the band. So I really respect and love this community, and I think leadership is essential to its development.
Thank you, Jack.
Hello, my name is Henri. I'm not originally from Harrison, which is kind of crazy, because I'm talking to Harrison Board of Ed. So go me, I guess. I'm actually from Eastchester, 15 minutes away. Seems like they're taking a lot of losses from us.
That's okay. I'm from Eastchester, too.
Yeah. Like, we're doing great against them. So, yeah, but.
We have that in common.
I moved here at the beginning of my freshman year. I knew nobody. It's very nervous, first day of school. I even contemplated on joining band. I didn't know what to do. You know, my mom was pushing me. You know, she's like, you know, it's good to have something down. You know, you should join. I was very nervous. I didn't know what to do. So I was lost, nervous. I didn't know anyone here, but everyone, you know, you know, moved up from, you know, school, even from elementary school. And it was one particular night, it was a rehearsal, where we were getting our uniforms fitted. And it was just me. I was one of the last people to get it fitted. And there's three juniors. I still remember them to this day. They included me in their conversation. They weren't obligated to. I was, I was always quiet, you know, shy. I didn't know what to do. But they included me in their conversation. And, you know, looking back, back when I had nothing, and I didn't know anything about this community here, this band gave me everything. And it's not just from the teachers, but it's also from the students. I believe that leadership, especially student leadership, doesn't make you a greater student, or bigger person. It allows you to align your shoulders with the other students, rise up together, you know, not to be in different places at different times. I believe that I've been inspired, I've been changed, influenced from the past leaders, and I wish I could do the same with my last year here. And yes, thank you very much for listening.
So Ms. Bukama started by saying that every, every time she speaks to a student, I hear it all the time, that asking them, what sort of school do they want this to be? And I think you can see tonight that
And I think you can see tonight that these students are very impressively making this the school that they want to be, which is a space that they feel seen and heard and valued, and that there's a community. And we would be nothing at Harrison if we weren't reflective in our process, and we always can see that there's more to do. So we are very proud of where we have come, and here is where we are thinking of going. So because we believe in this recursive process, we are looking to offer our summer curriculum again for all of the other advisors and coaches who weren't able to take it. We also have a lot of interest for a second course to deepen the work and really start to look at more specific research and spaces that we can begin to inhabit. We are continuing to look at student participation, and over the course of a few years, looking at the impact of this work, and that will help us determine the collective impact. And as I spoke about earlier, I referenced this concept of a vertical pileup. And what we learn from leadership of students and turning things outside of the classroom over into their hands is that regardless of what space they're inhabiting, beyond just the skill of what brings them to that sport or to that club, they're gathering these dispositions. And they will actually begin to pile up and become generalized that will help them to turnkey that into the rest of their future, which is what we want for them. We want them to go off into the world and have the agency to do what they want to do. So we are very grateful to have an opportunity to celebrate all of this work that's happening in our building, and on behalf of everybody, we just say thank you so much for supporting all of this and helping to cultivate these incredible young people. Thank you.
Well, don't, Leah, you can't leave yet, we may have questions. Does anybody have a question for Leah? Or anybody?
Yeah.
You know I'm going to have questions.
I'm just the latticeworker with the microphone, but they can come up too.
Of course they can. First of all, we should say that you should remember tonight, all of us should remember tonight, because there are moments in the history of this district where things change, and they change in ways that are profound, and we'll be talking about them in 10 years in tonight, whether you know it or not, is one of those moments. Because our district has always been about, how do we get kids to see and understand their responsibility to make their school and the place that we all exist in together better? This is the first time, and you know I've been doing this a very long time, that I've seen instructors understand the power of unifying the approach to giving students that platform. You use the word systemic. You're all extraordinary teachers, extraordinary teachers. We saw a presentation last year that we're still buzzing about, about the Writing Center, and all the work that you did to set that up, Lindsay, was phenomenal. But if it only happens in one place, then the capacity for it to affect all kids is never going to be realized. Tonight, and based on the hard work, and I know you're being way too modest, how hard you worked on putting together a course that would not only build on the brilliance of our faculty, but take advantage of the things you have learned about how to make it more systemic and sustainable. So tonight was a very unique night, and I promise you, in one year, Harrison High School will be a different place, because I have no doubt, hearing from our students, that they're ready to do this. And I love the stories. The stories are very powerful, because you can go to a high school and talk to a new student, and often the story is how they were isolated, how they were left out of the conversation. Or you can talk to a freshman, and they're not going to tell you about how they were welcomed in, they were going to tell you about freshman Friday. And here, what you heard was, people consciously, students who didn't know me, opened the door. And what you're doing tonight is opening that door widely to 1,100 kids. And so I couldn't be more proud of the three of you, by the way, as, I don't want to say aspiring leaders, as teacher leaders who will move to another level of leadership. But thank you all for putting your time into this, it is so important. I promise you, put this date in your book, this will be a night where we take another giant step forward to be what we want to be, which is a lighthouse for other communities to say, this is how people should treat one another. So I couldn't be happier, I'm almost levitating.
Yeah, I'm so impressed with all of you, and even how each of you and your experience as students is so different, and the way that you can not only communicate that, but support one another, and just even the agency and choice, whether it's in the classroom or on the fields, and allowing, you know, the athletes to choose the captains, and then as coaches, you know, honoring that. But Harrison really is such an incredible place, and I, we need to share this presentation, like, district-wide, like, everyone needs to see this, because, I know, not to embarrass you guys, but the truth is, I mean, it's really magic happening all over the place, and I wish more parents would truly see the beauty and the magic that's happening all over the place.
Well, Mr. Nichols got it all on tape.
I know, but we need to share the presentation.
You're absolutely right.
But thank you, thank you for your time and for sharing, because I am so impressed, and this presentation was really captivating.
Yeah, you guys did a phenomenal job. We're going to take, can we take a break so we can say hello and goodbye?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We're going to take a quick five-minute break, and we'll be back. We are back from our brief break. That presentation was so uplifting, and I'm so impressed with our students and these leadership roles that everyone is taking on, well, not everyone, but in this presentation. Okay, moving on to the personnel report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects, seeing none. A, certificated personnel. One, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Two, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Three, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. Four, leave of absence without pay. Five, change of status. Six, rescind appointment. B, non-certificated personnel. One, resignation. Two, resignation for the purpose of retirement. Three, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Four, regular appointment, SED clearance submitted. Five, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. Six, change of status, see other. One, classroom observer, SED clearance received. Two, classroom observer, SED clearance submitted. Two, I have a motion to approve the personnel report. Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects, seeing none. A, acceptance of donation from the Harrison Avenue School PTA. B, approval of CSC CPSC minutes. C, approval of CSC CPSC recommendations. D, approval of CSC CPSC annual reviews. E, approval of employee referral program side letter. Two, I have a motion to approve the administrative report.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Questions or comments? I'm sorry, questions or comments? I would just like to say thank you to the Harrison Avenue School PTA for their generous donation. All in favor? Aye. Moving on to the finance and facilities report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects, seeing none. A, disposal of equipment. B, contract award RFB number 24/25-10, window replacement at Parsons Memorial Elementary School. C, contract award RFB number 24/25-10, window replacement at Harrison High School. D, agreement to opt-in to the stop-arm safety program and installation and operation of the internal safety equipment. E, 2024-25 appropriation transfers. F, authorization to utilize playground equipment and related services contract with BCI Burke Company LLC. G, authorization to utilize equipment rental with related services contract with United Rentals North America Incorporated. H, disposal of a freestanding electric range and accompanying range hood. Two, I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report. Second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just two comments. We are approving the window bids tonight for the Parsons Memorial School and Harrison High School, which is great, because that means we'll be able, hopefully, to get them installed this summer. And I also just want to say that we are participating in this safety initiative by New York State and the county to put cameras on the stoparms of all of buses to catch anybody that is stupid enough or reckless enough to pass a school bus while it is standing still. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
One item before we close, I just want to extend the board's and my condolences to Samantha Pin's family. She was an employee of our district until very recently, she has three children in our district, and sadly, she passed away, and so we send our condolences to her family.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, have a wonderful evening.